First, our business committee is I will be swearing in our two board members.
I state in solemnly swear.
I proceed without regret to solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, to the governments established in the United States.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, to the governments established in the United States.
I state in name solemnly swear.
I proceed without regret to solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of Board of Education.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of Board of Education.
And not disqualified as a voter pursuant to R.S. nineteen four dash one.
And not disqualified as a voter pursuant to R.S. nineteen four dash one.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my abilities so far.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my abilities so far.
I state in name solemnly swear.
I, Aaron Thomasini, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, to the governments established in the United States.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, to the governments established in the United States.
I state in name solemnly swear.
I, Aaron Thomasini, do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of Board of Education.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of Board of Education.
And not disqualified as a voter pursuant to R.S. nineteen four dash one.
And not disqualified as a voter pursuant to R.S. nineteen four dash one.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my abilities so far.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my abilities so far.
Who will now be elected officers? I am calling for nomination for Board President.
I nominate Rachel Brooks.
Are there any other nominations?
I nominate Nancy Helber.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, we're going to roll call on the nomination of Mrs. Brooks for President. Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Kudilaru?
No.
Mrs. Helber?
No.
Mrs. Mezic?
No.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
No.
Mr. Thomasini?
No.
I'm taking a roll call on the second nomination of Mrs. Helber for President. Mrs. Brooks?
Yeah.
Mrs. Kudilaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Helber?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezic?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
No.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Okay, congratulations, Mrs. Helber.
I'd like to accept nominations for Vice President. I nominate Rachel Brooks. Are there any second nominations?
I nominate Mrs. Mezic.
Are there any other nominations? I'd like to see the vote for Mrs. Brooks for Vice President. Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Kudilaru, I apologize, Mrs. Kudilaru.
Kudilaru?
I'm sorry.
Kudilaru?
No.
Thank you. Mrs. Helber?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezic?
No.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
No.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
I'd like to change my vote. I apologize.
That's fine, she can change her vote.
She can change her vote.
No.
I made a mistake.
I changed your vote?
I made a mistake, I went out of order.
Alright, so you're in for a... So now that was an unsuccessful motion, staying in the vote for Mezic.
Mrs. Brooks?
No.
Mrs. Kudilaru?
No.
Yes.
Mrs. Helber?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezic?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
No.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
No.
So the results of tonight's election, Mrs. Helber for President and Mrs. Mezic for Vice President.
Can you make a comment? Mr. Carlos, are you doing the results of the election or the President?
I just did the results.
Oh, you did, oh, I thought you were talking about the actual votes.
I just would like to, just apologize, Mrs. Brooks. I read that in order and that was not meant to...
I would like you just to pay attention to detail from the vote.
I understand. So...
Well, you have... Right now, you don't need to talk through the rules or fish and read through this, but I think there's going to be a special...
That's why I wanted to ask what we need to talk about.
Well, you need a motion to move this and then you'd have a discussion about your calendar. I think the calendar is the one that we have a discussion about. You have to do your code of ethics, so... Mr. Carlos, if you want the board members to review their code of ethics after they move the second at these...
Uh, yes.
So, you move it second in the discussion, you can discuss the dates and times of your calendar, your meeting calendar. We can have to renew your code of ethics. So, around you can discuss it for life, but you have to remove your policy manual and your rovers rules and so on.
So, so, um, if you want to play, message of, um... Can we separate now the number now or do we have to wait after?
Yeah, well, you can move it however you like. As far as I'm concerned, if you want to just move to... Two, four, five, and seven. Those are controversial, that's up to you. But you're gonna review the code of ethics promptly, you have to do it before. So, that you're gonna do, and I understand this is gonna be a discussion regarding your board meeting calendar, so if you want to have that separated, that you can. If you want to do those things first, that's fine, if you want to move some things and then have those discussions, you can do that too.
Okay. Then, I would like to make a motion to move two, four, five, and seven.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Can I roll call please to Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Kudilaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Helber?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezic?
Yes.
Mr. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, I'm excited this year that we are going to take each, take a turn stating... Okay, can I go quick please? Can I have a motion? To move number six. My second motion?
Have you moved it? Are you... We made a motion, I'm sorry, I maybe I'm... Keeping score here. Okay. They made a motion, thank you.
That's it.
Another discussion order, do you put it up?
Yes, we, the plan was to have each member individually read one of each of the lines and vote to put out the board members. We're gonna start with one and we're going to be double around for table.
I will uphold and enforce all laws, state board rules and regulations and court orders pertaining to schools. Desired changes should be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures.
I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children and will seek to develop and maintain public schools which make the individual leave all children regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing.
I will comply with my board actions, policymaking, planning, and appraisal. And I will help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them.
I will carry out my responsibility not to administer to the schools but together with my fellow board members to see that they are run well.
I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education and will make no personal promises nor take any private action which may compromise the board.
I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups were to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends.
I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools which, if disclosed, repeatedly injure individuals for the schools. But in all other matters, I will provide accurate information and in concert with my fellow board members interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its schools.
I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of recommendation of the Chief Administrative Officer.
I will support and protect school personnel and proper performance of their duties.
I will refer all complaints to the Chief Administrative Officer and will act on such complaints at public meetings only after a failure of administrative solution.
Thank you. Can I roll call? Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Kudilaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Helber?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezic?
Yes.
Mr. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Okay, um, for number three, designation of times, uh, meeting times for, uh, this school year. Discussion concerning the, uh, board meeting calendar. Um, we've had, um, two versions of this calendar and I know that we, um, would like to have a discussion on this. Anyone?
Motion. You're not gonna move a calendar.
We're having a discussion first. Anyone like to?
I'll start. Um, I would like to, uh, thank you, Dr. Ternanian, for the, the version of the calendar with some additional dates added on. Um, as I do believe, you know, at times we will need that second board meeting, um, as you and I have discussed, um, to help us carry out our business as well. Um, I am looking though to see if we, um, can recommend a second retreat. Possibly we ordinarily do that in the summertime, um, but if possible, we could do something, for example, to foster team building, um, maybe within the next few months.
I, I find this idea very intriguing, so I'll just share my perspective and allow you all to deliberate amongst yourselves. Um, I do like the idea of having a mid-year retreat. Um, my preference would be, rather than having two separate experiences, having had the opportunity to plan one experience over two retreats. So that they're actually connected in some ways. Uh, we obviously did miss that opportunity last summer when we had our initial retreat because we didn't have this vision of a second retreat. That being said, um, if it's, the boards are meaningful to it, my instinct and recommendation for your consideration would be to do it sooner as opposed to later. I think it would be more difficult for us to pull this off administratively in the spring, given how much, how busy it is in the spring with hiring, um, and, and closing out the school year. Um, so if there was a, a desire to do one, my instinct would be to do one, uh, maybe putting out a date for you to consider February first, that's a Saturday in the morning. If that, if that doesn't work, my recommendation humbly would be to then, we look into late fall, early winter to do the second one after the summer one. Um, but if it's something that people are excited about, I would feel more confident about doing one well sooner as opposed to later. Um, and I would envision a four-hour experience on a Saturday morning likely as an opportunity for one way to do that, so. That's my, those are my thoughts on that.
Can I ask the administration, just so the public knows, we have two calendars in front of us, one has a few less meeting dates than the other one. I'd just like to know what was the philosophy behind both calendars?
Sure, so dating back to your previous board of last year, uh, we were asked to put together a calendar that we thought would be the most efficient way to manage the district's business over the course of the school year. And so, my, I worked in collaboration with Mr. Carlos, our business administrator, looking at what's the best way we thought to organize the capacity of our administrative team in pulling off productive and effective board meetings as well as creating capacity to run effective committee work. Uh, so one thing that the board a year ago was doing really well was robust work in committees. Um, and those committee meetings are often evening meetings, um, throughout the month, um, and done consistently, they form a board meeting. Um, and so our intention was to really put in place what we thought would be an efficient meeting, um, calendar that, uh, would allow for more in-depth collaboration between board members and administration and committee work that would then be made public at the end of the month in most cases, that monthly board meeting. Uh, and so, we put that out initially, we got some feedback about, but still, a significant reduction from previous years. So based on that feedback, we went back, um, month by month and added in some additional board meetings to get to two a month. Um, but we still felt like in the summer months in particular that we could operate the district efficiently with, uh, one board meeting a month in the summer. We looked at June, um, as a very busy time, uh, with graduations and school closings and we thought we, and school closing up, that June would be another month where we could afford to have one board meeting. We looked at September with a lot of activities happening, back to school nights, and thought that we could have, uh, one board meeting officially at the end of September there. So that's some of the rationale behind all the recommendations on Plan B. Um, and again, it's really just at the point of trying to create a sustainable, uh, calendar that is both efficient and, um, provides the, the, the district with the appropriate governance needs to operate smoothly.
On that, if you're exposed, we have a work session. Does that involve any normal board business or that be just strictly a work?
Thank you, um, and I'm beginning, Rachel, feel free to add if I misrepresent in any way. That is not a board meeting. That would be just a board, a budget working session, so what I mean by that, it wouldn't be, we wouldn't have a public comment, um, so it wouldn't be a traditional board meeting. Uh, but we would be, we would be doing this work of beginning to plan for the, for the budget. What we envisioned for March fourth, however, was on that evening, we would do an abbreviated exec session, six to six thirty. Then from six thirty to seven thirty, um, do the hour-long budget work session and then still have a regular meeting after that. Um, and again, what we're just trying to do is be efficient with, um, when we're having all these meetings and so it's not week after week after week. And what that does on the other end, it frees up other weeks where we can have those longer committee meetings happening in the evening time as well, so. That was the rationale behind that, did I say that right?
So essentially, we'd be having three meetings and that one budget work session meeting? We'd be doing a closed work session and then a public meeting?
For March fourth, specific to March fourth, the vision as it currently stands, which can evolve, is that we have an abbreviated exec session, six to six thirty. Anything that we can't get done, we have a March eighteenth exec session, we have full ninety minutes that we could still potentially do business on. And then we have an hour-long budget session, so from six thirty, seven thirty, here and, and public.
So we only have two budget work sessions on the calendar in both versions. But the ver- version B would be taking the one budget session and also trying to incorporate a regular meeting. I don't know if that, in my opinion, is that effective because the budget work sessions are extremely important so that we can allow Rachel to present the final budget so she can prepare for the hearing. So for me, that's, I think, trying to cram too much stuff into one evening. Budgets are a lot, you know.
So at this point, let me stop talking, that's something you all should deliberate amongst yourselves, I think, um, that was just the rationale behind it.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate the effort and all the time that you put into these calendars. Um, I also appreciate the, um, version A with the less readings, meetings can always be added if necessary. But I think the committing themes are extremely important due to the fact that that's where we do our work. Um, our poli- some committees have been prioritized, whether it seems like they have or have not. Policy was only the priority and then obviously education, because that's the business we're in. Operations Committee never was able to have a standing appointment per sec, we always try to do per deal because we worked around the other committees. So I appreciate the first calendar because that would allow an operations committee to meet once a month, especially coming up with our new budget season and next year, the very large, um, extremely big funded projects that we have coming. So it's extremely important for the operations committee to continue to be abreast on the progress and know what's happening to get those projects completed underway, under budget. Um, but most importantly, they've never allowed the opportunity to have a standing meeting like policy or education. So that would be a recommendation and I would ask of the board, um, and our president to make sure that we can allow for that time to happen because it hasn't been able to be done. We had more operation committees meetings last year than ever, but in my opinion, still not enough.
Just one additional comment to that, um, board member Brooks, um, about Plan A and Plan B. Um, I just know also, Plan B is still a significant step forward from the last couple of years in terms of the reduction in the number, so... You know, um, the, the type of situation where something, this type of change might go, we need to go slower over two years. If, and that could, Plan B would still be a progress towards that.
Do you also are looking to create an ad hoc committee to move forward with the strategic plan? Um, and then as well as, we currently have a negotiation committee, I know for bus drivers, but I know we have administration coming up so potentially we could have two negotiation committees, potentially another ad hoc committee, so we're looking at maybe six committees as opposed to the three or four that we've been operating under, which again, A would allow for a lot more time to schedule those important meetings. Just food for thought, these are the types of things that we have in the pipeline.
Anyone else?
Yes. Um, I'm actually very concerned about these two proposals, primarily because during work sessions, there can be no public comment. And to take a step back and not allow the public to, um, comment on our business is definitely a concern for me. I do agree that we need to come up with, um, some way to make sure that we're having operations committee meetings and negotiations or anything else at the same time. Um, some of the trainings I have gone to, um, kind of representatives of other districts and they have a dedicated work session that all the committee meetings, uh, all the committees are meeting pretty much on those days, so. It really is, and they invite the public in to see them. So that would be something that I would, if we're always making a step in that direction to have less meetings, it has to be something that the public can attend.
So you want to do committee as a whole?
No, that's not necessarily a committee as a whole, it's just as...
Are those boards of nine though? Or I just don't see how you would be able to have many committees simultaneously.
You would have to advertise it so other people could come, other, theoretically, other board members could come. You would have to announce that you're not taking a vote at that meeting, but it at least would allow some...
I just don't think there's enough people to have that many committee meetings simultaneously.
No, I agree with you, I mean, it would be, you probably would have to go one after the other, two people are on one, set it up that way. Something that we certainly would have to spend some time looking into and maybe that's the way that we want to go to perhaps going forward. But I think it's premature to, um, take away meetings in hopes that those dedicated many times will actually happen because we don't have committee calendar. That's it, your head of time.
I, I do also follow with the concern that the public doesn't have the, the opportunity to speak in some of these. However, I do appreciate Dr. Ternanian's, uh, Plan B here. Uh, now, after looking through it, I think it's a compromise between the two of them. Uh, obviously, again, we want to give the good public the opportunity to be able to speak and not wait, uh, you know, a month to be able to come before the board again. Uh, but at the same time, with a couple of these, uh, thank you for the explanation, uh, about the budget meeting and the good working session there, followed by the regular meeting. Again, I think adding that extra in there to good compromises in the middle and overall, uh, we can still have the opportunity to be able to have the public, uh, interact with us but at the same time, not be able to be heard by the amount of committees that Mr. Brooks...
Now, just to clarify, were you saying that everything that is labeled as a budget work session, you would, um, think it would be a compromise to make that a board meeting as well? Albeit the short one?
The, uh, I, I see, on March fourth, the, the, the two that I, that I observe here, uh, besides the budget hearing are on February twelfth and March fourth. If they wanted to have one as a full work session, I, I don't have any objection to that, I think it's a good idea. And then the second one is a compromise on March fourth to be able to have regular meeting and a work session. But it still allows the community to be able to come forward and so forth if they have something in their mind.
Mrs. Kudilaru? How many budget hearings, I, I have last year's calendar, um, for example, I only have like noted, um, for budget, I was just curious. And it, it, you have here three, so we had that many last year, you're not doing more than that, just...
We had three, we had two work sessions.
Correct.
I remember, and then we had the budget hearing.
I think two work sessions.
Two work sessions and then the budget hearing, which is an opportunity for the public to comment to the presentation.
Correct.
And then we do accept all the comments that, that we have.
And that, yes.
Now, I don't recall, I'm unsure, and I don't want to spot you, remember? No, I don't recall. I'm unsure. And I don't want to spot. Do you remember what board meetings was recorded at? Was it the February 6th and the February 28th meeting or was it 21st and 22nd?
It was in January.
Okay.
The budget or not.
Okay, I didn't think so.
The board presentation.
Right, okay.
We have to wait till, even this year, the first one, we were, the governor makes this, so we don't know if it's dating to the close budget meeting.
I remember that.
So I oversee the schedule. But we won't be able to actually present a balanced budget control, I guess, in the board, so we're definitely, it's still a little bit...
Anyone else?
So...
One of these.
Well, you have A and B before you, so you need a motion. You'll probably be called for a motion on A or B. And it's forgettable on the board meeting calendar. Do you?
Okay. I will call a motion on them in the order that they were presented to us and we'll go from there. If I have a motion for the A version. So... Second. Second.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Kardalaru?
No.
Mrs. Helborg?
No.
Mrs. Mazik?
No.
Mrs. Shields?
No.
Mrs. Smith?
No.
Mr. Thomassey?
No. But not yet.
No, I'm taking a motion on B.
If I have a motion for the B version of the calendar.
Second.
So I'm second up? You have a second?
Second.
Mr. Thomassey? If I have a roll call?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Kardalaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Helborg?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazik?
No.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomassey?
Yes.
So the motion passes. So we'll be working with the B version of the calendar for this school year. I don't seem to know a new one when you post it, it doesn't say new. And can I throw a little more space in between the means that some of the red comments, just all kind of fun together?
We were, we were thinking of just taking out, since it's a given that it's held here at Copeland, and space those columns so that you can...
But isn't this posted and does it mean it's posted immediately on page?
It says it.
It said, it says it in...
Okay, it's closing short.
The annual notice says it's at Copeland, so... I'm thinking that column sort of crowded out the...
Okay, for the next part of the meeting, I need to read the public discussion. During the course of the fourth day, the Rockaway Township Board of Education offers members of the public an opportunity to address issues regarding operations of Rockaway Township Public Schools. The board reminds those individuals to take the opportunity to identify themselves by name and address to limit their comments to items listed on the agenda and/or items directly related to the operations of the school district. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered and response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that the members of the public be courteous and mindful of all rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the board. Students and employees have a specific legal right, specifically legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The board bears no responsibility nor will be liable for any comments made by the members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in the comments and will be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. If I have a motion to open to the public?
So...
Mrs. Mazik? And Mrs. Brooks?
No.
No.
Second.
All in favor?
No.
Any close? Are there any further communications? Can I open to the public?
I have my own comments. It's public comments, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if anybody wants to...
Hi, can I have a motion to open to the public, please? And then?
Yeah, I have to say that if anybody wants to speak, it's all...
I think we'd like to speak with this gentleman. And second. I have a motion to close, so the public can vote. So it? All in favor?
No.
Any close? Mrs. Karla, do we have any further communications?
No, there hasn't been.
The approval of the minutes, can I motion to approve the minutes from December 11th, 2019?
So moved.
Second. If I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Kardalaru?
Same.
And then, Mrs. Helborg?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazik?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomassey?
Second.
Superintendent?
Thank you. Good evening, Rockaway Township. Let me begin this evening by wishing everyone a very happy new year. I feel confident I can speak for our entire administration team when I say we're all very excited about what the new year will bring to our students, staff, and families of the Rockaway Township School District as we continue to build on the progress we made over the past six months. Let me also take a moment to both congratulate and welcome our two new board members. We appreciate your commitment and dedication to our schools and I look forward to opportunities to collaborate with both of you to ensure we are all working together in support of our students, families, and staff and leaders by actively creating a supportive culture where every child's potential becomes a reality and challenges become opportunities for personal success. So again, welcome to both of you. This month, the job embedded professional development for balanced literacy continues across all five of our elementary schools. Teachers will also be introduced this month to a new reading assessment and will begin the process of training on this new assessment, so we're prepared to launch the assessment this September. I completed my listening tour before the holiday break and in listening to our students and staff, I experienced an evolving synergy emerging from the feedback about wanting more project slash problem-based learning opportunities alongside greater investments in STEM activities. I also heard from elementary teachers in particular that a need still exists for greater investments in independent reading books with a focus on nonfiction titles. I would like to congratulate Principal Gennella and Ms. Barkhaw for being invited to present at the recent NGECC meeting, the New Jersey Educational Computing Cooperative. They presented on how Copeland has implemented Panorama, excuse me, Panora... Panorama, thank you, I misspelled it. Panorama Education Social and Emotional Learning Suite to augment the existing character education programs at CMS. During their presentation, they stressed the importance of marrying the data they collect on students during the SEL surveys with timely and focused lessons on topics such as grit, self-efficacy, and emotional regulation. They have been invited to present on this topic again this month at the annual conference. Lastly, before the holiday break, Copeland hosted a school pep rally to support our new basketball teams. I would like to encourage everyone in our community to visit Copeland's website and view the pictures and view the video of this event. It was truly an inspiring event and is a wonderful example of the community and caring culture being purposely built by our teachers and leaders at Copeland. Be sure not to miss the hip-hop performance as it clearly demonstrates that when adults demonstrate this level of care for our students, many good things will happen for all students. And that concludes my report.
Next section, when printed for board action, goes from page six through page ten. Items one through twenty. And twenty-one, and twenty-one. So we're voting on one through twenty-one. So it's page nine. If I have a motion? So moved. If I have a roll call?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Kardalaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Helborg?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazik?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomassey?
Yes.
The next is HIV. We have only one HIV, unconfirmed, 2019-7. Can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
If I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Kardalaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Helborg?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazik?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomassey?
Yes.
Next section, education, section one through three. If I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have more discussion than public comment than we motioned to. So can I have a motion?
Well, you want to call for discussion, I'm looking for you.
Okay.
So any discussion?
Is there any discussion from the board regarding education? Can I ask who's going to be exchanged?
It's community course.
Any further discussion? Can I open it up to the public with a motion?
So moved. Mrs. Karla? And Mrs. Karla?
Any motion of the public to come to the board? Can I have a motion too close to the public?
So moved. Mrs. Mazik?
Second.
Mrs. Jones?
All in favor?
No.
Can I have a roll call, please? On education?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Kardalaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Helborg?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazik?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomassey?
Yes.
Next section, administration, C1. If I, um... We need a motion to accept the donation?
So moved. Second.
Discussion from the board?
Uh, yes. How did this donation come in?
This was an anonymous donation. Uh, and it came in, I was originally authored to Jessica Walker, who was at the cafeteria just now, and she contacted me and, uh, and she was the person who went back and told Ken Aron's daughter how we would go about, uh, the donation.
Well, thank you.
And she asked me.
Great, thank you. This is getting distributed immediately amongst schools or retarded students?
Uh, we, we had an initial discussion about how we were going to use the money to offset the financial balances. Luckily, this district does not have a large amount of financial balances. So then we thought if we went to a... Not what we received as need, but we thought what we would do with the money is families that did not apply for Freedom Reduced Lunch in the time of that year and their children charged the lunches, so they ended up on the negative balance. We would use that money to offset their negative balances because they were since approved for Freedom Reduced Lunch, so the evidence of need was there. So that's how we're leaning towards giving that money.
I like that instead of the, you just buy ice cream at the egg and have a box of... Any questions in the board? Comments? No, just, and thank you to the person out there who did that. If I have a motion to, to public comments regarding administration?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Anyone from the board?
Motion close?
No, motion close.
Motion close?
Yes, motion close in public, I'm just sorry.
A motion close, thank you. Second. If I have a roll call?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Kardalaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Helborg?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazik?
Yes.
Mr. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomassey?
Yes.
Next section, on the agenda is finance, uh, items one and two. If I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion from the board? Motion open the public?
So moved.
Second. Any comments in the board? Motion?
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Kardalaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Helborg?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazik?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomassey?
Yes.
Next section, on the agenda is old business. Everyone have old business? I have two items. One is being had in section. I just wanted to comment that I would like to thank the Bus Drivers Association and the rest of the board and the negotiation committee for taking the time out of their patient workday to meet this past Monday. And I am very excited to say that we signed a temporary memorandum of agreement. The next step is for the association to ratify the agreement and then we'll come back to the board for a vote. Very excited about that. My second, I wanted to comment on, you know, I love Blue Family Night, so I was fortunate to go to the family Cody night. Mrs. Wax, Mrs. O'Donnell, and Mr. Hedges did a wonderful job. It was a lot of fun. And I'm enthusiastic now. I'm glad to see we're having more of them and I'm super excited. Anyone else?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to comment that I had had a chance to attend the last of the music department's performances in various schools. Just want to say you guys did a great job as usual.
New business?
I have something. I have the pleasure of attending the board office today and I happened to notice the artwork that was displayed and I did appreciate seeing that. I always love seeing student artwork. I love the idea, thank you.
Um, Peter, I just wondered if you were going to have a pre-scheduled presentations for the, uh, for the year like we have had?
Yes, the intention is to potentially consider one for each board meeting, but to begin to integrate other content areas besides music. And so I have some ideas that I should be prepared to present at the next board meeting about... um, uh, about a potential plan for how to do that, um, and ensure that we have equal representation from all school communities too, over the course of the year. So, but it's something I would like to continue.
Excellent, thank you.
I would love to see that as well, I think that really does lend a lot, um, to our meetings, and it does keep the fact that we're here to educate children at a core part of it.
I'd like to let, just let everyone know, on January fourteenth in the borough at Thomas Jefferson School, there is, I think, they're considering their regional spelling bee, and I think we have ten students from Rockaway Township competing against Warren, Rockaway Borough. Yeah, there's thirty, Deadville, there's ten from every school. So just an FYI, if you want to have a good time, spell, January fourteenth at PM, be there every square.
And just to agree, we said it was where in the borough?
TJ.
TJ, okay. Thank you.
You can't go, this is strange content.
Thank you.
Uh, Dr. T, one idea that I was, um, would like to explore would be, um, the foundation, uh, any of the projects that they have done?
Can you speak into your mic?
I don't want to, I see. Can we look into, when we have our presentations, um, the foundation, is that a lot of cool projects going on? If we could have them, they come to our board meeting and display what they've been working on with our students?
So, just to clarify, uh, foundation, you're referring to the RTA, right, the, okay, good. The reason I ask, and so, yes, I would be excited to do that, and to highlight some of the work they're doing. Just so you all, just to remind everyone too, we're also building partnerships with the MAC, the Municipal Alliance, um, which helps provide funds through the borough and, um, and the Rockaway Township, and so, um, they have their quarterly meeting next week, which I'll be attending, uh, but they have already pledged to serve some funding to provide some after-school programming for Copeland and some of our other schools as well, so, um, I could be getting to highlight that work as well. Sure.
I have another new business item, uh, as far as the Rockaway Township Substance Abuse Alliance. They will be holding a fundraiser on April twenty-ninth at the Rockaway River Barn. Captains of leisure will be donating their time by performing there, and from the times of ten AM to ten PM, the barn will be donating the percentage of their sales as long as the customer hands in a receipt, although that's in the front, so if you need a place to eat that night, please head over to the barn on April twenty-ninth.
Any other business? Can I have a motion to open to the public?
Comments?
Second. All in favor?
Come on. opposed?
Can these open to the public, anyone like to?
Tara Van Oring, uh, co-president of the RTA, um, I'd like to congratulate our two new board members. Um, we have to save the date for the board, uh, Screenagers, the next chapter will be having a viewing on February twentieth at Copeland Middle School. Um, the film offers solutions on how we can help our kids navigate the digital world. Um, tonight we have the Dwyer staff attendance, and we'd like to highlight some of the great things that the staff has been doing in their school. Um, Dwyer had many teachers receive Newser grants this year. Um, Nicole Gillen, Jen Gruner, Elise Webster, and Katie Nangle received a grant to implement morning tubs. Um, morning tubs offer a play-based opportunity for students to explore, create, and communicate. Um, it's a great way to start the day and encourages collaboration along with enhancing the use of diverse cross-curricular materials to enhance the multicultural experience. Jen Gruner received a grant also called Creating Character. She purchased a cricket cutting machine to create monthly interactive bulletin boards to focus on the character traits of heart that are discussed during her community meeting time. Uh, Gina Parisi and Vanessa Waxman received grant money. They will be utilizing breakout EGU lessons with grades three to five in the upcoming weeks. The lessons are digital form and actual form and model mini escape room activities. Um, the lessons are based on the standards in all content areas and involve problem solving, critical thinking, and collaboration. Tara Tugby has been using her grant money to run a walking club for fourth and fifth grade students. Um, the club is done during recess on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. The program promotes exercise, and it gives the students a supervised activity during recess. Um, this club gives students a chance to talk to students they would not normally interact with, and this is two weeks state separation, friendships have been made due to this club. Um, the Star Lab will be returning to Dwyer next week in the fifth grade as part of an original lesson. Um, Dwyer participated in the Jets tackle bullying program. This program is presented by Bethpage Federal Credit Union in collaboration with Stop Out Bullying, um, to tackle all, all forms of bullying by raising awareness, um, and preventing bullying for kids and teens. Uh, Dwyer chose one student a week who was an upstander, and they got recognized on announcements, the Dwyer Twitter page, and they also received two free tickets and a parking pass to a jet skate. Uh, Dwyer is also working with Buffalo Welling to provide incentives to classroom reading programs by offering a free kids' meal to the participating students. Um, the student council of Dwyer has been very busy. They ran the second annual Uli Sweater Contest, um, which is a whole lot of fun. Part of the donations went to the local food drive, and they are getting ready for the next building fundraiser, which is Super Bowl, which is a camp food drive centered around the Super Bowl. They also had a meeting with the superintendent where they expressed their concerns and praised what they loved about Dwyer. And on December twelfth, the PE department presented the Twelve Days of Family Fitness. Parents alone with their children enjoyed a night filled with movement, fun, and laughter. Families had the opportunity to spend quality time with each other and learn healthy habits. Ms. Caitlin Malloy organized the event with support for Mrs. Cory Blazi and Mrs. Rosa DiCandia. The PE department hopes to coordinate two additional family events before the school year comes to an end in an effort to promote the importance of health and fitness. Stay tuned for the future events to come, and she said you're all invited to those nights, so I hope so. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. This then, where is this treaty, is that sequel to the original?
Yes, it's part two.
Anyone else want to comment? Any to close, uh, any emotions to close for public comment?
So moved.
Mrs. Shields, and Mrs. Mezic? All in favor? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Eight twenty-seven.